With any kind of luck, I suppose we'll have sixty-five tomorrow, I think.
Who said?
Sixty-eight. Okay.
Just a reminder, if there's an emergency, we exit out the nearest exit, which is at
the back of the building. Once you go to the far stage of your vehicle, please do not leave until some direct available emergency service personnel. Also, just a reminder, this is a non-spoken building, so if you must, go someplace else. Close call.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I have two approvals tonight. First, which is on the agenda of the budget, excuse me, the board of trustees meeting of April thirteenth approval, please.
Motion to accept or present it, any additions or additions?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And secondly, the budget hearing of April fourteenth, two thousand fifteen minutes.
Motion to accept or present it?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Change the additions or additions? All favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Close it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not too much tonight. We'll start with the bills. For the period of April seventeenth through the twenty-seventh, the bills total of four-hundred eighty-six thousand, two sixty-three forty-six. The five largest of those, number one, New York State Employee Health Insurance, monthly premium, one hundred fifteen thousand, five forty-two seventy-three. Next one is Benita West, tax redemption, twenty-five thousand, four twenty-one ninety-one. Third one, fundamental business, twenty thousand, nine fifty-six fifty. They collect hard court fees, and because of the amnesty that we're going through, there's a lot of fees coming in, and that's a percentage that they pay. Number four, Eastern Resource for landfill charges, sixteen thousand, eight seventy-four sixty-five. And Russell Reed's sludge removal, fifteen thousand, two seventy-eight sixty, and they total one ninety-four, seventy-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. May I have approval?
Motion to accept or present it?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
I think we've, up to the total, beginning of last week, I think we've brought in on the amnesty, what, eighty-seven thousand dollars? So it's more than successful.
It's over.
Oh, just we're told we're over a hundred thousand dollars right now, so we've cleared up a lot of backlog that's been sitting there. We'll take a hundred for twenty.
I think that's four percent, if I'm not mistaken.
And, okay, this fundamental business, let me show.
I do have two other things, very small items. Number one, I have transfers. Now, I'm not going to go over in there in front of you, that's to clear up near end accounts. May I have approval for those?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. I have one sewer item, transfer from the contingency account, thirty-four thousand, one ninety-six fifty-eight, to sewer utilities, twenty-eight thousand, one ninety-six fifty-eight, and Wilkins Comp, six thousand.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Aye.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you very much.
We've got another couple hearings. Request approval to return six hundred and ten dollars, a reference to the property of owner of thirty-two Smiths, who's been occupied since seven debt debts has been paid. Since, I always kept saying, we had to provide a service, and first I didn't look at it.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Request approval for RQ, request for qualifications, to enlist a qualified web design companies, to design and manage a legitimate website. It needs to be updated, and even adapt to things like, things that I don't realize. So when you, many people, like, hit the people overboard, it's simply on your smartphones, that will be the size of the screen of that, adapting smartphone use, so that, that's what that's worth.
Motion. Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, just to expand on that, we, as you know, Marion, who saw that Smith, they were carrying myself, have been working on a master calendar, and we're waiting for a new website to, and their advice as far as how to display and administer that.
Explain the master calendar, so people can see what that will be.
Right, well, the master, what we're doing with the master calendar is that with the more activities that we have in Village, we want to have a calendar that all the different groups and agencies have to reference what's going on in Village, Chamber, Parks Department, administration. The way we have, the way we anticipate being is that the clerk, the seal will continue to have say over what goes on in the calendar, but it will be able to be accessed by anybody who wants to log on to that calendar, in far as being able to make plans about overlapping and having conflicting events.
That's what happens a lot of times, it's been happening, is that events get backed up to each other, because nobody knows what the other guy's doing. And so, this is an attempt to clarify that, have one master calendar that has, but really it's said, the Chamber activities, the Village's activities, things that may be happening with the D I D, community development, recreational park. So with all of those, if, whether it's a resident in a club, whether it be the Lions Club, the Royal, or something, want to do something, they can do it, but with danger, they can take a look to see what's happening that weekend, I think, so, I think it's a great idea. Okay, who's playing Dennis Smith today?
I'm Dennis.
Okay.
Dennis could be here tonight, asking to give a little report on some of his activities. I'm just going to read it. The camera's still a work in progress, should make major strides in the coming week. There's electricity at the Four Corners Hall, and they plan to mount a camera with a tool Wi-Fi to send a signal back to the theater for connectivity. Permission, that's going to be a great camera, by the way, that Four Corners camera, it's going to rotate around, look up the street, look down the street, and hopefully we're going to look the feed from that camera on the new Village website, so.
So you'll be able to look what's going on.
You can be in California, Tokyo, and see what's going on there.
Lions, five-three.
Right. Dennis also got permission from the building owner and the Pat Med, trying to suggest features to mount and connect the camera from the back of Twenty-two West Main Street, which will cover the Church Street parking lot, which is a troublesome area at times.
She knows, in the back of the, she knows people.
Right. These are hopefully going to happen next week, Thursday of this week and Tuesday of next week. That leaves just one camera, which is going to be mounted on Reese's nineteen-hundred. I think it's going to be a fixed camera that will look west on Lake. The last item is the farmer's market on this Sunday morning from eight to one o'clock, starting in early June, is moving ahead. He's going to iron out some details. A bunch of vendors have signed up for it, various farmers, food vendors, and a bunch of ancillary, food-related vendors as well. That's it.
You know, one of the things that Dennis is also working on, as many of you may know, he's the point person for the Parks Project, and he's been working with Billy and Maria, and one of the things that you'll be getting with mid-May sometime?
Yes.
The, you know how we send out, we normally send out every, every springtime, our brochure that has all the summer activities? Within that brochure is going to be a questionnaire, even better, a survey, as to the needs in our parks. And that survey then will be, actually, we go to a company, we all remember taking tests, and I remember taking tests, on a Scantron. It's actually going to go to Scantron, which is a corporation that scans them, and then evaluates them for us, and comes back with statistical analysis of what's been put down for us. So as we get closer to that, talking to the press about making sure people know it, and maybe it might be put where it pays.
Yeah.
But it's going to be, it's a very, very important part of, you know, the Parks Program is to get the input, community input. And from that, we'll start putting together some committees and begin to talk to people in smaller groups as to what people are going to see in their own community parks, and also the parks that are insured. And David Kennedy's not available tonight. Chambers still at Central Washington Avenue. Stop and say hello. Frank, maybe you could tell us about the change? No, not today. David Mayor Crick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just before I talk a little about, yeah, I just want to thank Trustee Keys and the Highway Department. We had an issue in my neighborhood, I called you that night, and about a little parking sign, and the neighbor called me, or texted me.
So for the next day, is my problem?
Very early in the morning, about before eight a.m., and thanked us for putting up that little parking sign. It was an issue on RoboVard, where the students from Saint Justice College were parking, where the sign had an arrow pointing west, and they were parking east of the sign, which was right at the corner of Park Place. So they figured, you know, since the sign was still, the arrow was pointing this way, they could park over there, but they were blocking traffic and things, and the crew was down there first thing in the morning, appreciate it. That's what makes this village great. Just a brief theater report, want to thank everybody who attended the gala on Saturday night. Ronan Tyden was absolutely magnificent, as expected. It was a great party, a lot of friends were there, and a lot of people, and it was a very good night, and a lot of fun, and thank you to everybody who was there, appreciate it. And I'm just going to rattle off a few things that are going on the other, the next month or two. Mickey B presents a salute to America on May second at seven o'clock. Let's Swing with Artie Shaw on May third, Sunday afternoon matinee. Sunday, the thirty-first of May, Pops in Patchogue, a musical journey through Europe. Sunday, the twelfth, is the two thousand sixteen Miss Long Island and Miss Long Island Teen Pageant, which we have every year, it's always a big success. Friday, and then now we're looking into the, into the fall, we have Memories of Elvis, and of course, a big show coming up, Kansas Returns to the Theater on Saturday, October tenth. Get your tickets on patrotheater.org, and if you want to go see Kansas, you better get tickets now, because they're going fast. Thank you. Go ahead. Trustee Keys.
Mr. Mayor, a little word, members, ladies and gentlemen, very brief tonight as well. Did, I did meet with the Kings Park Investor, the company that approved two weeks ago for the crosswalks, to give back the Village, um, so that should be started, just to explain the process. I'm sure you've noticed, our concrete contract has been replacing, renewing, installing a lot of handicap ramps. This is in preparation for these crosswalks. The next step is for the asphalt company to come, we approved them last meeting, I believe, and they'll put fresh asphalt in the relief, the white strip for the walkway, it's all part of the process, it has to be done this way. And then the crosswalks will be in after that, so we're waiting, you'll see the blacktop guys come in soon, because we want the handicap ramps, obviously, you know, a little bit ahead of them, get a jump, so all kind of works. Material-wise, we should be ready by, you know, the middle, the end of May, but as I said, it all depends on how each group works, what the crosswalks watching again, but it was a good meeting, and they're really going to look nice, it's going to be, it's going to be a good addition.
Sign off on the context today.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Chapter's signed off on today.
I'm requesting approval tonight for Rosemont Construction Astro twenty-fourteen D V D requirements contract. To Millen pave Jennings Avenue in preparation for speed tables. We've been talking about this for quite a while, traffic calming methods, I think actually, I think one of our residents suggested these two, as we checked in, and we're going to go down to Jennings Avenue. I know, Mr. Mayor, we want to talk a little more about Jennings Avenue as well. While I'm at it, it's called the while we're at it. We'd also like to do the same thing on Cedar Avenue. Recently, I requested a public hearing to install stop signs on the corner of Cedar and Campbell. After discussion with some residents and amongst board members here, we think we'd like to try these speed tables on Cedar as well. The stop sign idea may not really be the best, so what I'm going to do, I haven't, I don't have a price yet on Cedar, the price on Jennings would be not exceed thirteen. Because, see, I'm going to shoot high, what I'm going to do is request not to exceed thirty-five for both, fifty-seven's going to come, call less than half of it. Cedar is a little wider, so I may cost a little more than Jennings, but I guess you know, obviously, the changes will just come in and do what we have to do. But I'd like to get that on board, so as soon as we get the price, we're going to work on all of them. So my request would be approval for Rosemont to do Jennings and Cedar as well, Millen pave and Brett Ford and Speed Tables. Of course, not to exceed thirty-five thousand.
The speed tables are six feet wide, going up about three inches, it's enough of an elevation that you have to slow down, and then, so, in lieu of, on Cedar Avenue, move the stop sign, that section between Laurel, going on down towards Patchogue. And we'll see how they work there. And the same thing about Jennings, where we had complaints of speeding on Jennings also.
Yeah, I mean, the stop sign, you get there, I mean, it's kind of different reports, even as far as the pollution caused city and traffic, I mean, some of it's a little bit exaggerated, but if you think about all the things that could be with it, and complaints people have had, I think this is what we're going to do.
Are they odd, is, are they noisy at all?
No.
The speed tables?
Yeah. They're not ridges, they're not those bumps, they're not the.
No, no. Very, very, just, it's just gradual, and flattens out, and gradual back down.
Should we try Jennings before we try Cedar?
Well, we'll do Jennings first. We'll do Jennings first, I'll get the tool and then I'll do that.
And if it works, we'll do West. Either I'll do it myself.
I have a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, in relationship to that, one and a half ago, we approved, and we had a fairly length of discussion about the access, the ingress out of New Village. And been over there with both the building inspector, and who's also a fire marshal, Peter Sarich, Joe Dean, and somewhat with the developers from Tritech, but more so with our staff, making determinations, and what we talked about at that one time, we approved, was one way in, one way out, in Jennings and out Oak Street. Problem that you have is, the problem we see, is going out the Oak Street exit, there's a blind spot on the corner. Anybody walking north on Ocean Avenue, on the west side, stepping off that curb, somebody's bound to determine, to make that, that light, would be a very dangerous situation. We looked at various options. Given that we're going to be putting the speed tables on Jennings, which should, pretty should be slowing down traffic, also divert some traffic, some people are going to do it once, and say, I'm not going down Jennings again, I'd rather go, oh, those should go a different way. But what I'd like to recommend to the board is that we rescind the one way in and one way out, and instead make Jennings two-way, in and out. And we tried that, there's a traffic studies on it, they're not going to know how it's going to work until we put it out, and it better work. But any thoughts, questions?
Yeah, I think once the table's in, I think it's a good indication, but now we have to do anything else.
Exactly. It's also, it also provides much more direct access to the parking lot at the corner of Jennings and Lake Street. You know, if, if you were going to overflow from the inside, because it's all full, you have to go out Oak Street, up Ocean, across Lake, and up Jennings. To be able to just go out, it's just much more.
So are we doing this as a, sort of like, as Joe mentioned, you know, put the, put the speed tables in, see how that works, if it doesn't calm it down, will we consider? I think we open up, we open up Jennings.
Okay. We send the previous.
We send the previous, right. Because do we have to do this, two things?
We have to rescind the original motion.
I'll make a motion to rescind the original motion.
Resolution.
Resolution.
Resolution. Which was one way in, one way out, Oak and Jennings. Motion, second? Second. All favor?
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, but Oak Street not doing anything with that, right now?
No, right now, I just keep, and I've been in there half a dozen times, just walked and stood there, and then waited for people to walk, and they just walked blindly into that, that opening, and I could see somebody on a bicycle, a kid on a bicycle, grinding and walking with his cell phone, running into, walking across, and I think it's just a dangerous proposition to itself. And I think the speed tables will dramatically straighten out Jennings Avenue. So there was a motion, second? All favor?
Aye.
A motion to.
We have to make a motion.
We have to make a motion to make it two-way.
Yeah. A motion to make Jennings, the exit entrance out of.
But just go back to the original sign.
Yeah. They implement the original one now. Oak Street closed. Mr. Mayor, you did rescind it, now you're going to do nothing.
Exactly. You heard it. Motion?
Second.
All favor? Aye. Okay. Anything else, George?
Uh, no, nothing, that's all I have.
Trustee Keys.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just have a few quick things. Sixteen South Street, you know, it's been an abandoned building, it's falling within, the torches are falling down, it's just been an unsightly place, weed growth, rodent infestation.
It's the White House.
It's the White House grocery street from the parking lot, from.
The bus stop?
Yeah, from the bus stop, on South Street. And the Village boarded it up in two thousand and ten, it's been unhated and without utilities for about fifteen years now, so it's been a problem, there's been squatters, there's been some drug use going on, people, you know, urinating on property and all like that, so it's been an unsightly place, it's been a dangerous place to be, and it's come to our attention, and so, the senior builder housing inspector, Peter Sarich, requests approval to declare sixteen South Street is unsafe or hazardous building as defined in Village Code Section one sixty-two dash three, at the recommendation of the building inspector, so that's a motion that we will.
Second?
Is that being done demolishing the house? Is that the city?
We have to set a public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah.
Second, South, motion.
So, the motion's for a public hearing?
Public hearing, yeah. Should we?
Yes?
All favor?
Aye.
All right.
And I do have a building housing, yeah, I got a report tonight. And this is from April first to April twenty-seventh, building housing sums is issued for that period of twenty, building permits issued for that period were fourteen, super storm sandy permits were zero, plumbing permits issued were three, demolition permits were three, rental permits issued for that period were twenty-one, notices of violation for that period were twenty-two, number of complaints received in that period was seventeen, number of illegal apartments or dwellings found in that period were one. And fees collected in that time for A R B applications was eleven hundred and twenty-five dollars, building permits were six thousand forty-five dollars, zoning certificates were fifty dollars, dumps to permits seven hundred, fire homes a hundred and seventy-five dollars, fire inspections one thousand dollars, planning board application seventeen hundred dollars, plumbing permits three hundred and fifty dollars, rental permits seventy-seven hundred dollars, and zoning applications twelve hundred dollars, for a total of ten thousand six hundred. And that's my report, and that's all I have.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, did I cancel the public hearing for Campbell and Cedar? Do we have to cancel the public hearing for Campbell and Cedar?
You did that already.
I did.
Yeah. Last meeting.
No, 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 we rescind.
No, we said, we said it for another date.
Oh.
Didn't we?
Yes, we rescind it for twenty-six.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, motion to cancel the public hearing.
Second?
Second, yeah.
Okay. Again.
Thank you.
Again.
You stepped on my time.
I'm sorry, Tom.
I'll be very grateful tonight. I had a meeting with RoboScalzo from Tritech and Four Corners, and I know some residents have expressed to me, they don't see any lights, what's going on, you know, is anybody in there? Two hundred and four of the apartments out of the two hundred and ninety-two are under contract. And Rob invited any one of us to come over to the parking lot at night, and he'll give us an escort through the parking lot, so you can see the Mercedes's and the BMWs.
I'm noticing a lot more Mercedes in our patch, I am.
Well, it's a requirement to get in the building. Yeah. And the retail, they're very close-mouthed, and maybe there's some kind of a jinx in retail rental, where you don't want to tell anybody until, you know, not, never mind that they've signed a lease and they're paying, but maybe you don't even want to mention who they are until they're in the building, because there are a number of organizations that have signed leases for retail space, they're building things out, but they're not in yet, and he doesn't want to say who they are, but it's going really well. The two hundred, the last time I reported, I think it was a hundred and sixty-five apartments were rented, that was, I don't know, eight weeks ago, so the spring apparently has fired the place up again.
Spring is from.
The spring is from, and before you know it, you know, it'll be occupied, so, very successful. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Just a reminder of a couple of things that are coming up in the arts world. This weekend is the opening reception for Linear Constructions of the Pack Gallery, co-curated by myself and John Sino. He was busy hanging the show today, but it's going to be great. A great and interesting exhibit, there's one artist whose work I really love, and you'll see it when you get there. So that's Saturday night from five to seven. As far as things going on at Plaza Mac, not only do they have their new seats, but the movie Woman in Gold has been doing extremely well, and the thirtieth this week will be the last night that you'll be able to see Woman in Gold in Patchogue. So try to get down there if you haven't seen it, I haven't seen it yet, I have to squeeze it into my schedule. Ron, you saw it, right? Were you there? Yeah. And you like this?
Linda was there also.
You like the new seats? Yeah.
Yes, very much, I'm very comfortable.
Very good. Other things going on at Plaza Mac, they're joining and collaborating with the Y M C A and putting together a media arts culture camp, pre-teen adventure, children who've completed the fifth grade, and for sixth through eighth grade, kids who were too cool for camp. They'll be bused from the Y M C A to Plaza, and there'll be various workshops where they'll be learning how to use H D cameras, sound recording, iPads, lighting, green scenes, there'll be editing equipment, so it sounds like a great workshop. Maybe Linda, you can, but we'll, it sounds like it'll be great for the kids, and it's nice to have that asset in the Village. So.
I need to sell some.
Yeah, yeah. And hopefully, next time we meet, I'll have a little bit more information, but once the new budget picks in, we'll be putting a few trees around town, and some of the empty tree pits on Main Street, and then I'll be getting together with my tree folks to decide where to spend the rest of two thousand and fifteen tree budget. Other than that, I have nothing.
We gave you money.
What's that?
We gave you money.
We gave you money, yeah, yeah, right, Ron, there's money for trees this year. Yes, there is.
Money.
So I know how you've been missing my tree reports, so, you can count on that coming back, and that's all I have to report for tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hilton, how are you doing, Saturday trustee?
Thank you, good evening, trustees.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees, Patty, and guests. This weekend, we have two events at Shorefront Park. At 9 o'clock, in the lawn area where the walkway is, there's gonna be the Pause for a Cause, which is the domestic violence. It's the pet parade replacement that will move from Main Street down to Shorefront Park.
Is that Saturday?
That's Saturday at 9 o'clock. And at 10 o'clock, in the Walmbauer Field, which is the Ryder Avenue Fields, the PYAs having their opening day, 10 o'clock.
9:33.
9:33 from Bay Avenue.
That's for Saturday?
Yeah, at 10 o'clock.
According to Pete Feeney, it takes 17 minutes to walk from Bay Avenue.
Right.
So you should be there when?
10 a.m.
10 a.m. Unless you want to walk.
7 mile an hour down Southwest Route. So that's 9 o'clock for the pet parade at Shorefront, and 10 o'clock for the PYA at Ryder Avenue.
65. 65.
65.
65.
Did you even start that?
65. It's pretty cool.
Oh, wasn't she the very first bat?
No, that was my career.
You were out the first pitch, and he was the first bat.
And he passed through the fields first before he did that.
He was quick.
While he was building the bank. And the other thing we have on our Parks Recreation Report today, Mr. Mayor, like to request approval to adjust Valerie Cecil's salary to $205 per month.
She might have been the first.
She is valid. She was a true...
This has gotta be the 30th year or something.
She's a scorer for the, and she...
It's a good...
I'm sorry, for volleyball. Yeah. And I don't know if the salary went up or down.
It actually went down, because the team dropped out.
Right, that's what I was thinking, yeah. That's a motion. Thank you very much.
You're really talking your salary.
Less teams.
Less teams, sir. Counsel, any comments, or fingers where? Everybody has a vote, so look to be heard. Dennis?
Thank you, Village. Good to see you, Mr. Mayor, and trust. I have my Kansas tickets, by the way. On the note of the tickets for Kansas, if the Village agrees with my first issue, the Village is gonna start commanding $200 for a ticket to a concert. I think it's time the Village looks long and hard into moving the closing hours from 4 p.m. to 3 p.m.
Oh, I'm sorry to...
I'd like to make a motion, have this, get something started, that the Village look into closing bars and restaurants.
We can't do it, but it's not permissible by state law. You've called the state liquor authority, it's not permissible for a municipality of this size. The city of Saratoga is trying to change it to 2 a.m. And it has to be done on a county level. There are counties enough state in New York. But a municipality of this size would have to appeal to the state liquor authority, and they're, they have not been granting those requests. I follow that this whole issue very closely.
Even through, did they hit Brooklyn areas, they got it back to 2 a.m.? I mean, okay, I'm not gonna...
No, I mean, I'm a maid. I read every article that has the word state.
The city of New York, as you know, is its own, they have a D.C., they have a D.E.P., you know, they really are their own.
There is no way the Village, I mean, I thought the mayor took the precedent when he closed the Village during the storms. I mean, we had that lunch...
An emergency declaration, yeah, that was different.
They declared 7 a.m. every week. I'll do that.
They just Google the city of Saratoga, it's great, because they have been trying to do it very, very recently, like this year. They've been trying to move it back to 2 a.m. in their, in their main business district with renewals and with new licenses, and they got shut down.
Wow, that's terribly unfortunate. Because, and I say this less as a resident of Main Street, more as a person. I leave for work between 4 and 4:30, and the carnage that I have to witness and the Village cleans up is unbelievable. You go out at 3 a.m., and it's not going on with those people that are leaving at 3 a.m. It's like a huge, you know, I see the code guys out at 3 o'clock, they're not getting out of the cars, I don't blame them. They're not equipped, they're staffed to deal with some of those people at 4 o'clock. And you know, the precinct is, that's their changing hour, which is odd, but it is. So a lot of it goes undone and unnoticed until we clean up, clean it up in the morning. And there's a considerable difference between 3 a.m. traffic and at 4 a.m. There's just, there's just no way we could do this in the Village.
And you have certain places that do close, Caribou's closes.
Yeah, a lot.
A lot of people, but there are three or four of them that just...
And there's nothing that's in the Village. That's terribly unfortunate. Um, okay. Painting, you're painting the stripes eastbound on Main Street. Before you get to Ocean Avenue, there's no more turn lane there. And then parking lanes, the parking spots that we alleviated, the last three, that surface has come back through. Now you have cars that are parking there illegally, so to speak. From, Geno's got one spot in front of it, now, it used to be three, and then we blocked them off. Those lines have now resurfaced, the whites, so people park there. And there's no separation between the turn lane and the through lane on the eastbound side, if that can be looked into.
It is, and one of the issues that you have is, if you use straight paint, you can do it at any point in time. If you use thermal glass, you have to do it when the temperature at night doesn't drop a little. When you put it down, the asset, at least 24 hours of 50-plus temperature, so we're just waiting for those.
Okay.
Because we have North Ocean Avenue, we have to do some restructuring on that also.
And also painted line on the exit of Church Lot onto Railroad Avenue. Just a yellow line separation, but there is an in and out there. That seems to get abused quite a bit, traffic, jammed traffic, and people don't realize that's a two lane. If one yellow line down the center, the last 50 feet, it'd be nice. This is, before I let it come in, there's a white truck that parks extensively in the loading zone behind the old J.R.'s, has no inspection sticker on it. One of the Village businesses asking me, they ask us all the time if it belongs upstairs. It does not belong to us, there's no inspection sticker on it, it's a large white truck, four-door truck.
You called me on that, Dennis. I had public safety go over there, and I asked them to keep looking at it, and...
Just tonight, the girls from the, here, asked me again, whose truck is this? And I'm like...
Does it get ticketed for the no inspection, or are they giving you tickets?
They can't, I have to say no, because it's, it was there yesterday. It was there yesterday, it's there now. And it has no inspection on it, that's the part that kills me. It's got a white, it's completely bleached out, it's non-visible. There's a white piece of paper that's taped into the windshield. So it could belong to one of our cars, basically, bleached out.
Does it ever move?
It does. It's an employee of somewhere in that area, I don't know who, but they keep beating us up upstairs. It's not ours, you know, so I said I'd bring it up to meeting. The meters, are you ever gonna link between the mains, so we can put them on the phone app? Is that still gonna happen?
It should be on there already. What, the parking lots aren't on the phone app?
Not for the rear, not for Church Lot.
They should be, I'll check, but that's...
Is it a different zone number?
Yeah, they have a different zone number, but they should be on, I mean, they assured me that it's working. This is the first I've heard of it.
Okay, I'm still not getting any... Okay.
But that's free for Village residents, right?
Yeah, sure, you know, I help.
Not bad.
Okay. Also, for the girls at the Hair Place, the angle spots, if they can have, be part of a two-hour program like the first two rows are. They ask, behind, I keep calling it J.R.'s, it's now Hot Prop. There's a dozen angle spots that are not, that are kind of, one side's loading, one side is...
Two-hour.
But they're not two-hour, they're, they're not, they're two-hour forced, I guess, they're, they're, it's not forced, so that would... So anyway, those can be forced or looked into. Also, on your speed platform, the fire trucks won't have a problem with those things, their weight won't, doesn't... They can hit those things at, you know, a good speed without impeding their, because of their weight. Because I asked about that with, with the fire trucks, we have jobs all the time. They can hit those humps fairly quick with very little, because of just their sheer weight. So that will leave up concerns there. And the rest is all synonym, you know, it's true. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Dennis. Any other comments?
Joseph Miller, 276 West Avenue. Um, the house on our street that burned down?
Yes.
Any plan to deal with that?
He's in the homeowner's issue of tickets in Justice Court. He has eight different tickets that are pending. He has a lawyer who has written to the Village with certain restrictions as to what the Village could do in objections to access to the property. So this afternoon, I spoke with the Village Inspector, as a matter of fact, to whether we take the next step in bringing that property to now the Supreme Court for access. Because the property owner is not cooperative, as you know.
I know he's not cooperative. And honestly, I have to say, I feel a little bit concerned about him. I don't know, he's, I think he's living in his car, Tom, which is covered with a tarp.
Adult Protective Services have also been contacted, they'll have service.
Well, he has to accept services from them, and, I mean...
I, Joe...
Can he live in that other house in the White House? Is he borrowed from the White, he owns both those houses.
He's been in that, I've seen him on the porch at the White House.
I don't, does he, I don't have...
I don't know where he lives.
I've seen him go in and ask the White House.
Is he allowed to live in there?
No.
The White House also is uninhabitable?
Yep.
They don't let you know what to that house either. And we also think he's been seen taking, doing what he did to the other house, bringing, throwing paint tanks into the house.
The attorney? Well...
It is, we, we received a letter, what, today?
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna cut. Generally, don't talk about, you know, property owners on cases, the case for potential, registered cases, but I have expressed to the attorney that the Village has serious concerns as to the well-being of the resident, and which is our primary concern, quite frankly. You know, structures can be dealt with, but lives can't be replaced. And it is very, it's a serious concern for us, and I've expressed that. And she said that she would, you know, take it back to it. And, you know, people have a certain amount of freedom of conduct and how they want to be, as you know, as a, you know, health professional. So that person wants to act, conduct themselves in a certain way is permissible, provided that they don't cause any kind of injury or damage to others or even themselves, which is what the Village's perspective, those two houses pose to that neighborhood.
You know, that would not have Sunday morning, as you know. At 10 o'clock Sunday morning, you couldn't have asked for a better time to have a fire, you know. Fire department, the men are in training, they're at the firehouse, so they were there within four or five minutes. That happened at 10 o'clock at night. Boat probably would have burned, and the White House probably would have burned.
Right, the boat next door, I'm sure they had no gasoline, and, but it, you know...
Murderless.
Yeah.
They would have just gone up like...
Right, right, on both sides.
Yeah, so, so the situation isn't just the mere facts.
I feel sorry for anybody, I mean, there's some people up on the next block who have a house for sale.
You want to go to, talk to me tomorrow, I'll tell you some things I don't want to say about them.
Thank you.
Mr. Kemp, I think you have your hand up.
Well, it's personal.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, Richard Kemp, Jennings Avenue. Mr. Mayor, recently you spoke about garbage and pickup and had to be brought to your attention by a resident with pictures and so on and so forth. And your comment was that a lot of people who work during the week put their debris out during the weekends. Maybe you might want to consider changing the recycle day from Wednesday to Monday.
The problem you want to do with that is then you end up with a heavy garbage. Then you have, what do you call, Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Friday? Just in terms of how you pick up your regular residential garbage, the schedule doesn't work out right. That's the reason it's done that way. And that, Richard, I'm in agreement with you, in a sense, I wish we could do it that way. Wish we had the extra manpower to do it, but it just doesn't work out in terms of scheduling regular rest...
Okay, all right. Now, recently, on television, I saw a incorporated village, I believe it was Freeport, it was in Nassau County, where they passed a law whereby Suffolk County police officers must wear a camera attached to their uniform. And I'd like to know if the village of Patchogue could follow up on that same area. I am a victim of police brutality, and the owner of the Emporium has recently filed suit, at least according to the reports on the computer.
Well, it comes from Suffolk County PD, their policy and regulations, their policies and regulations. As far as our guys, for the amount of things that we got, something's...
It's confused, the issue here, that was a Village Police Department. People are at the Village Police Department, that's why they can't, so that's a mark on the suit.
All right, all right, well, I still think it might be something worth looking into. I mean, we have an issue, that exists? Okay, at the last meeting, I requested some investigation into the feral cat issue. And I have found out that at the April 16th Book Haven Town Board meeting, the spay and neuter with the town of Hempstead is being looked into and investigated. And this was announced by Valerie Cartwright, who is a councilperson with the town of Oak Cave. So they are actively looking into it and pursuing the matter. So I think that the...
What is that, Lisa, Mr. Kemp, you know, I know you said it, you fresh went on me a little bit. And the town of Hempstead, they're giving village or town officials the right to go on private property?
No, they have a law that, they have the right to spay and neuter all cats.
Yeah, that's something that can go on private property and take a cat and spay and neuter some, and you may have said a less, but I don't...
I believe it went when a cat winds up in the shelter. They allow immediately to spay or neuter that animal. It's a law, town of Hempstead. Okay, I'd like to report malfunction with the streetlight, Jennings Avenue and Thorn Street, Southeast Corner. The light goes on, goes off, all hours of the night, so there's a problem there. Now, the parking matter with amnesty. I also saw on the TV where one town or village passed a law to boot cars instead of making amnesty, so you might want to consider that. Because a car with a boot on is not gonna move. So, okay, now, trustee Hilton commented tonight about the calendar. And I would like to inquire as to when a state of emergency is declared, could the, this calendar include these meetings being either adjourned or kept on the calendar? Because when you, when you pass, and you did this, this winter, you declared a state of emergency, and you held a hearing that evening in this building right here. And I don't...
Exactly where we're sitting, exactly where we're sitting right now, isn't it?
Right. I believe it was in January.
Yeah, but as Ms. Seale said, is that? The state of emergency started at 9:00, we had to be at 6:00. So the state of emergency went into effect at 9:00 p.m.
It was on the computer at like 4 o'clock in the afternoon. It was on the computer at like four o'clock in the afternoon.
But if you read the whole, there's an effective time, as of nine, nine PM.
Oh, when you order all businesses to be closed.
Right, by nine PM.
Which is technically against the law. It's not a good jurisdiction.
Technically, it isn't.
Well, all right. Okay.
What page do you want to go to?
I'd like to ask about these speed tables proposed on Main Street. How many, and where are they going to be placed?
I don't have, I don't have evidence.
This is four, two northbound, two southbound, down between Lake and Thorn.
Well, specifically where, when you say Thorn, Thorn's not near Lake Street.
Mr. Keese, if you stop by, Mr. Keese will trade in with you there. Can't even, they'd be equally spaced.
Well, I, I have a concern, because I, I have tenants that park in front of my house.
They're not going to be in front of that.
Excuse me?
I don't think it's going to be...
You're just close to the corner.
Yeah, you're too close to the corner anyway, it's not going to be any near corner, it has to be farther away from the corner.
Fifty feet, at least?
Yeah.
Probably. Don't quote me, don't take the technical, it's going to be away from the corner.
Well, that's where my tenants park.
Okay, I, I would, based on the parameters of your drive, your yard, you're too close to the corner, I would say it's going to be farther away from your house.
All right, this, this might give me a great difficulty, because I have a big one-ton truck with six tires.
It will not give you a problem at all.
You mean, as far as good driving over it?
No, I have a, I need a turning radius to get in and out of my driveway.
I think that's not fair.
I need to know exactly where you plan on locating these, to be in my property somewhere.
Touch base with Mr. Keese.
I would like to know.
We'll bet you on it.
Now, it also gives me a concern when I notice that at the four corners, that the, the curb cuts and the pavers goes around the Tri-Tech property, they have removed the monument to dupe the door from the spade.
It's there.
Well, I didn't see it, but it's a, it's a, it works, go around, around that curb, and the other three corners are different, so, you know, it just doesn't look very consistent.
Who did they complete that?
I mean, this was a considerable expense for my reflection.
Yes, it was. If you noticed that we put those in, they would have been torn up when we put the new handicap, you know, those other three corners, the handicap ramps were all replaced within the last ten days. So if we had done what you say we didn't do, they would be gone now, because they would have been torn up when we tore up the other sidewalks, so...
Okay, yeah. Regarding the Tri-Tech matter, I have also noticed that, I spoke some time ago about a very critical survey marker on the south end of Jennings Avenue and Lake Street, that Tri-Tech looked and looked, and they finally found that survey marker. After I spoke, now there's a big, I don't know if it's an electric box or whatever it is, but the survey marker is gone. So...
Mystery.
That survey marker determines all properties from, on the west side of Jennings Avenue, from Lake Street to Cedar Grove Street, that was all one tract of land at one time back in the eighteen hundreds. Every parcel of land, there should be four corner markers, and every lot is determined from those four markers. If one is missing, could throw everything off. So...
I'll find that for you.
All right, I appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Any other comments?
Okay. Something really quick. I think we need to reconsider the three-unit rule that this board has adopted in the past concerning public comment. Perhaps not tonight, but there's a good purpose in that rule being served, it requires people to come, be concise about what they're speaking about, and to have a focus about what they want, to bring attention to the board. I think it was a good rule, and it should be reconsidered for you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Second.
All right. Okay.